Ledge allegiance.
Ledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, myself, Bruno Maini, will be acting chairman for the meeting. Michael Riley is not with us. Also, we'll have Dominic Canicca in person.
Yep, Dominic is up to be seated today.
Dominic Canicca will be seated in Michael Riley's spot. So we'll call the roll to my right.
Dominic Canicca present.
Brian Condon present.
Man Brozzi.
Robert Westling, Commissioner.
Nicole Lubo, alternate Commissioner.
Kathleen Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Awesome. This part of the meeting, anything that's not on our agenda that you guys want to talk about, either online or in the public, please raise your hand and come on up. No one online? No one in the public? Beautiful. The first public hearing for 590, 600, 604 Main Street has been moved to the March 6th.
I actually have an update on that. The applicant submitted a letter, and I'd like to read the letter for the commission if that's okay. Dear Ms. Gallagher, on behalf of the owner slash applicant, 590 Main Street Monroe LLC, we respectfully request the withdrawal of the application, ZCA/RAA 2024-04, file number 1030, for the regulation amendment petition application, applied for 590, 600, and 604 Main Street. The owner would like time to explore the potential for alternative site uses or concepts. Thank you for consideration in this matter. Please feel free to contact us with any questions from Jason Montagno, Soli Engineering. So they will not be on for the March 6th meeting and they will not be on the Architectural Review Board next Tuesday.
Wonderful. Next. Kathleen, I think you're up for a little bit. We're going to do RAA 2025-01, file number 1038. So the next bunch are going to be text amendments and changing the text amendments. Just to give everyone a quick little recap on it, a lot of these, actually all of these, have come to subcommittee. Subcommittee has worked on them with Kathleen and her staff. And during that time, we have asked to bring it to the full commission, bring it to the public, and let's see what you guys think. Kathleen?
So the first item is you guys all have draft approvals too for all of these regulations. Do we want to read the public hearing notice?
Yeah, do you want me to read all of them or do one at a time?
I'll tell you all, they don't all, they won't all count for one?
Technically, you should read them one at a time.
All right, we'll do one at a time. Planning and zoning commission, in accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 6th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. Be a hybrid and Zoom meeting and in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. First item, RAA 2025-01, file 1038, petition application for regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations, section 5.4.2. A and 5.4.2. C designated as a design district.
Wonderful.
Oh, notice was published in Voices twice. No, not Voices, in Connecticut Post twice on January 27th and February 3rd.
Yes, everything moving forward is now in Connecticut Post.
Thank you, Red.
This is one that the commission is familiar with. This is the change to the regulations under Article 5 for the Main Street Design District that changes the requirements for what can be considered in the Main Street Design District. Must have direct access to Route 2511 or 34. Previously it said "and 34," which is not possible to have access to all three routes. Must be within 1,500, 1,500 feet of the state right of way. That does not change. And the minimum parcel size shall be one acre and can be compromised of multiple parcels. Previously it said minimum district size. So this was a request by this commission to update those items, and that is the extent of this text change.
Any discussion? Dominic?
None.
Red?
Uh, none.
They got it? Rob? Nicole? Kathleen, want to close? Oh, to the public, my bad.
Sorry, and for the record, I would just like to put in the first exhibit was the application and the text change. We have a second exhibit, which was the municipalities referrals because this is a text change. It had to be given to all of our adjacent municipalities. We also gave it to WestCog and VCog and MetroCog, all of which said to the effect of there was no significant impact. And we didn't receive anything from the municipalities or from the Connecticut Public Health or Aquarian.
Excellent. Anybody in the public would like to talk in favor or against this? Anybody online? Nope, we're good. Kathleen, like to close it?
You can close the public hearing. There is a draft up in front of you.
We'll do those at the end?
Tonight, yep, but just, yes, yeah, but just for your review. So that's one other piece of information that's been submitted.
All right, close. Ryan?
All right. In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 6th, 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. For RAA 2025-02, file 1039, petition application for regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations, section 6.5.3, Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Minimum Acceptable Standards, to update document references. Notice was published in Connecticut Post twice, once on January 27th and once on February 3rd.
Kathleen, exhibits?
The exhibits for the record include the application and the text changes, the municipality referrals, regional referrals, and public health referrals, WestCog's response, NVCog's response, and MetroCog's response, all of which saying it had no significant regional impact.
Okie do.
First application is by request of the town engineer. Article 6.5 Soil Erosion and Sediment Control references the guidelines and the manuals, which it would like, which is required to reference when we're doing soil erosion control review of plans as well as onsite. All of them refer to the 2002 Connecticut Guidelines for Soil Erosion and Sediment Control as well as the Low Impact Development Appendix to that same document and the 2004 Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual, all of which has been updated. So we are proposing to take out all of the years and we are just putting as amended after each document that is noted so that we don't have to make this change every single time a new stormwater reg or soil erosion control manual is issued out from the state.
Anybody got any questions about it? Dominic?
Okay.
That's good. Anybody in the public or online? About this text? Yeah, see, nobody? Kathleen, would you like to close this one also?
We have more for the comments, yes.
It's closed.
In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 6th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. RAA 2025-03, file 1040, petition application for regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations, section 4.1.3. D Business District Outdoor Storage of Materials Related to Commercial Use and 4.3.5. E Industrial Use Outdoor Storage of Materials Related to Industrial Use. Notice published in Connecticut Post twice, January 27th and February 3rd.
Thank you. Kathleen, exhibits, please?
Exhibits include the application and the proposed text change. Exhibit 2 is the municipal referrals, regional referrals, and Aquarian Public Health referrals. Exhibit 3 is the response from WestCog. Exhibit 4 is the NVCog. Exhibit 5 is the MetroCog, all of which saying that there is no significant regional impact. This text change was prompted from the review of 205 Spring Hill Road. If you remember that application, it was a proposed warehouse in the rear of the property. They had outdoor storage proposed as part of that project. There was conflicting information in the regulation. There was an updated outdoor storage regulation that was approved several years ago. Unfortunately, the bulk of that material was all updated in the business district and therefore it included both the business district outdoor storage and the industrial use outdoor storage, but it lived underneath the business district. So the industrial district had a conflicting outdoor storage regulation. So this is just to separate those two. So none of the percentages of the lot area that this commission had previously discussed and agreed upon was changed. It's truly just breaking that out. So the business district remains the same with the exception of the I-1 and I-2 district get moved into their applicable locations under 4.3 Industrial Districts under the accessory use section.
Excellent. Dominic, please?
No question.
Yes? Anybody in the public or online? Good. Kathleen, like to close this one also?
Yes.
Ryan?
Thank God, I'd like to hear you read. CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 6th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person attendees at Monroe Town Hall. RAA 2025-04, file 1041, petition application for regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations, section 2.2.1, General Zoning Terms to Include a Definition of a Kitchen. Notice published in the Connecticut Post twice, January 27th and February 3rd. Voices really throwing me off.
I know.
Insane voices, cool, that's a lot of ears. Only makes sense. Exhibits, Kathleen?
Exhibit 1 is the application and text, proposed text changes. Exhibit 2 is the municipality referrals and regional planning referrals. Exhibit 3 is the WestCog response. Exhibit 4 is the NVCog response. Exhibit 5 is the MetroCog response, all three saying that there is no regional significant impact. This text change was prompted out of staff's need to define a kitchen for the purposes of being very clear with applicants that are proposing accessory dwelling units. So basically, if you can't, if you have a basement, a walkout basement, and you want to make an accessory dwelling unit, the item that puts that into the threshold is basically the kitchen. You could add two bedrooms and a kitchenette and a microwave down there and it wouldn't be considered an accessory dwelling unit, which has a whole set of regulations that this commission adopted in 2002 that they have to require in additional parking space. It will get its own separate address, things of that nature. So many people come in and they go, well, what's a kitchen? Health department has their own definition. The building department has their own definition, but our zoning code doesn't have a definition. So we've been operating under an assumption based on theirs and we wanted to put something in the regulations that would make it very clear to us and to applicants to make sure we had a very clear line of what that is. So this proposal is just to add a general zoning terms for the definition of a kitchen, which is a room, a place, or a space within a structure equipped for the preparation and/or cooking of food, where the presence of a ranger oven or utility connection suitable for servicing a ranger oven are present. So basically, if you have a ranger oven or if you have a connection to one, because you can, you know, not have one be present, but obviously put it in after you get a certificate of occupancy, you are now considered to be a kitchen.
I know, I know for fact we've been working on this one for, this one's been a long time coming. So it's, I'm glad it's finally, finally through subcommittee and staff, it's finally come together. This one's, this one's been lingering a long time, so. Guys, any questions? Dominic?
Just for clarification, ranger oven and a sink?
You could have a sink without a ranger oven and we would not consider it to be an accessory dwelling unit. If you think about people that renovate their basement and they put a bar and a sink and a refrigerator for drinks, we are not considering that to be a kitchen because now we're going to have a tremendous amount of accessory dwelling units. So the assumption is if you have an oven or a range, you probably have a sink, but a sink alone wouldn't trigger the accessory dwelling unit.
Ryan? Questions? Lee? Rob? Anybody in the public or anybody online? Questions? Kathleen? Close it?
Good.
Ryan?
In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 6th at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall. RAA 2025-06, file 1043, petition application for regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations, section 3.5.2, General Requirements for Age-Restricted Housing to Increase the Percentage of Permitted Units From 6% to 10%. Notice was published in the Connecticut Post twice.
I'm really sorry, that's.
Yeah, right, you skipped one.
Five.
You skipped one. Can we go back to it after? Can we just?
Technically, if we put.
No, no, go ahead. All right, RAA 2025-05, file 1042, petition application for regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations, section 8.1.4. C Public Hearing and Notification for a Special Exception Permit, 9.2.3. F Butting Labor Notification for Amendments to Zoning Regulations and District Boundaries to Change the Requirements from Certified Mail to Certificate of Mailing. Notice was published in the Connecticut Post twice, once on January 27th and again on February 3rd.
Kathleen, exhibits, please?
Exhibits include the application and the proposed text change. Exhibit 2 is the municipality referrals and regional referrals. Exhibit 3 is the WestCog response. Exhibit 4 is the NVCog response. Exhibit 5 is the MetroCog response, all of which saying there is no regional significance. Exhibit 6 is comments from the Conservation and Water Resource Commission, which I would like to read to myself in the Planning and Zoning Commission from the Monroe Conservation and Water Resource Commission. The Monroe Conservation and Water Resource Commission is submitting the following comments in regard to the proposed zoning regulation amendments on Butters notices. Town of Monroe open space property is sometimes in a butter to an applicant's property. The Conservation Commission responds as needed to applications that may have detrimental effect on open space. The Conservation Commission is concerned about two proposed changes. The timing of the mail to Butters notices would be reduced from 10 days to seven days. The method of mailing would change from certified return receipt requested to certificate of mailing. A certificate of mailing only provides evidence of the date the mail was accepted by the post office. It does not provide a record of delivery. The current method of certified mail return receipt requested provides proof of delivery. The commission is concerned that the proposed changes gives property owners less time to be notified, reviewed, and respond to an application that may directly affect their property. Also, there is less assurance that an abutting property owner will receive a notice at all. The commission is requesting the timing of mailed a Butters notice remain at 10 days, specifically 10 business days, and the method of mailing remain as certified mail return receipt respectfully. I did have a conversation with them afterwards just to explain where we were coming from and I am happy to give that overview right now. This is being prompted most recently by 685 Main Street. So 685 Main Street, 100 foot of Butters notices clipped Northbrook, which means they had about 400 certified mail return receipt notifications that they were required to do, which they did. More than 10 days than the required timeline in the regulations. They did a full two weeks. We still had people not get the notice until, not just after the first public hearing, after the second public hearing and it was voted and approved upon. After that, many of them got them. They said they ran into people of the postal service walking around with them, extraordinarily frustrated that they had to do 300 of these at Northbrook. Because of that, people just didn't get notified. And so we had two options. One, we could make applicants do double mailing so they could do something regular mail and they could do it certified return receipts. Or we could match what our Zoning Board of Appeals regulations require, which is a certificate of mailing. So basically, they have to go to the post office. The post office will verify that all of the mail being sent out exists and then it'll just go through regular mail and the hope is as it gets to them faster. And it actually increases public engagement by getting the notices to the Butters in a quicker and faster and oddly enough, more reliable manner in this way. So every single person who has called the complaint, and I will tell you, it's at least 10 people that I have directly talked to that has had issues with this. We offered this as an, as a suggestion of this is what we're looking into to change the regulations and they were all in favor of it. I've also talked to people that work with multiple municipalities in our area. You know, some of the developers that work with us and they have told us that we are one of the last holdouts for the certified mail and most other places are doing certificate of mailing.
This was another one that, that we've been, I think we've been lingering around with for, for a while and subcommittee as well. When you do go look at other towns, because at first, in my head, I was like, well, we can, you know, you get handed something from the post office. It's, but when you look around to the other towns, they've all adopted this. Or most of them, right, have adopted this. It's pretty much standard operating practice now. So when you, when you do that kind of research and you, and you talk to Kathleen and obviously I'm not talking to some of the builders, but you know, some of the builders and developers in this town, you know, this, this is how it all came about. And I really think it's, in my opinion, I think it's, it's a better system going forward. But again, start with Tom.
I agree.
Just in that letter, they mentioned that they wanted it to stay 10 days instead of seven. Is that something that we're?
We're just matching it. It's really like the fact that it's seven and 10 right now is really confusing to applicants. We've had people actually miss the 10 days for the public hearing because they were used to doing a zoning board of appealed application that was only seven. Same thing with staff. Sometimes staff is like, wait, is this one a seven or is this one a 10? So the idea of keeping it consistent throughout the regulations was more of just consistency and integrity.
So the only issue we had was with 685? This all came about for that?
Since I've been here, 685 was the worst contender. I do believe somebody just called me the other day on another public hearing that happened, but 685 was the one that generated people walking in in addition to getting consistent calls saying, you guys need to come up with another way to notify Butters because this was just unfair.
Rob? No questions?
No, and I just want to add that I think aligning with other municipalities is a good idea. And both in the industry I work in, the federal agencies and state agencies also do the certificate of mailing. So this all aligns to other agencies as well, so.
It just streamlines it, makes it.
Yeah.
Anybody in the public or online? Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
You kissed my baby.
What was his comments for your meeting, Rob?
Oh, this.
You can take, take five, can I?
This one, this one is a bad.
Here, create another spare. Um, just two little things came to mind as I'm listening to you. And one of them, it does seem, and I don't know what the media links are, but I'm just throwing out there. If the main impetus for this was that some little teeny portion of Northbrook resulted in 400 mailings have to go out. It doesn't make sense to me when you have that land touched was most likely land controlled by the Northbrook Property Owners Association. So to me, it should have been one going to the association. The association then has responsibility of letting all of the condominium owners know. So that's just that little aspect of it. Just one other part, and it just has to do, for the most part, I trust the post office a lot. In the past few months, I've had some very unusual things. Perfect example is just last week, got a piece of mail in and I'm looking at it and talked to my wife. We were looking at it and we realized it was mailed two years ago. Oh, close, close mark. Two years ago.
It's a little late.
Two years to get to us. The other instance has to do with, I don't know if any of you have what they call, well, the post office offers a thing where they'll send you a daily email of your mail that's coming. So I have that. Last summer through the fall, once a week, a piece of mail would show up. It was coming to me. It was out my address. It was someone in Milford. It was social security. So to me, I don't know, it's a check or whatever it is. Every week for over 10 weeks, post office would get it. They say, oh, that doesn't belong here. We go into their system. It would get shot right back to, when it, it put it back. No one did anything for 10 weeks. So the post office is not infallible. To me, wanting that received is pretty important. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public?
I'm open.
We have one person online, Christopher Russo?
Chair Commissioners, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzi LLC. Wanted to make a, a comment regarding this. We send hundreds of mailings. We do it through different towns. And the, the certified mail really became a problem during COVID and it's just kind of lingered since then. We've had a lot of times where we'll submit, you know, something certified mail and we won't get the, the green receipts back until after the hearings. You know, the Northbrook one was the first time I heard of it having not have been delivered prior to the hearing. Usually I, you know, it seemed like it was just a delay in getting the green cards. But it's obvious that the post office has struggled with some of those large mailings. I do think it's nice that, you know, each condo owner gets a notice, you know, personally and it's, and, but if it's, if it's done by certified mail, it's clearly a heavy load for, for the USPS to handle. So this is a type of mailing that I've seen adopted now through almost all the towns. You know, you go in, they, the post office workers look through the ones you're sending out in your list and they stamp it. It's a date stamp with it to ensure that it goes out and, you know, it won't have some of the extra burdens on the USPS so they can deliver it quickly. So I think this is a, you know, smart change to the regulations.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Nope.
We also did get one comment that someone had, because it looked so official in their, like, daily digital thing, that they took the whole day off of work to sign for it because they had to be there for it, there for it. And they were super bummed out that it was just a public hearing notice from the town of Monroe. So that was also another complaint that we had gotten.
Excellent. Anybody else? Good? Kathleen?
Yes.
Ryan?
I just want to point out, Kathleen, we have two copies of file 1043. We do not have a copy, a draft of 1044.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to take a sec to go get that?
Yeah.
Uh, when we are done with all of this, we can take a five-minute recess and I'll make the copies.
Perfect.
In accordance with CGS 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February 6th. That's 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via Zoom and in-person attendees at Monroe Town Hall. RAA 2025-06, file 1043, petition application for regulation amendment to amend the zoning regulations, section 3.5.2, General Requirements for Age-Restricted Housing to Increase the Percentage of Permitted Units From 6% to 10%. Notice was published twice in the Connecticut Post, January 27th and February 3rd.
Kathleen, exhibits, please?
Exhibits include the application and proposed text amendment. Exhibit 2 is the municipal referrals and regional referrals. Exhibit 3 is the WestCog response. Exhibit 4 is the NVCog response. Exhibit 5 is the MetroCog response, all of which saying there is no regional significant impact. This text change is for our age-restricted residence district. At the moment, the way that it is calculated is that it takes six. At the moment, the way that it is calculated is that it takes six percent of the total number of single family dwellings within the combined RF one, RF two and RF three districts. That's a total number of units we can have in the town. The number changes slightly every year as residential dwelling units um, are built and increased, but not by significant amount. Twelve seventy-one Monroe Turnpike was the last age restricted housing that came in. Uh, they made that amendment from nineteen to twenty-five units. Um, they took up, I believe, but the last two or three remaining units that we have in town. I haven't done the calculation for the October first, twenty twenty-four grand list yet, so we might have a little more at this point. Um, but we are basically at our max. And the other item to take into consideration is that currently with our plan of conservation and development in our current zoning districts, we don't have any other vacant ARR districts. Um, with that being said, I know that um, there has been talk about potential age restricted housing developments, nothing concrete, more of just the idea when people have a property, is this even an option? And our answer is always no. As we've seen um, some residential developments and um, subdivisions come into town. Um, we have the same conversation about the demand on schools and our school systems and children, and um, school age children. This does not put that same demand on it. Um, it would allow um, for our fifty-five plus, technically seniors are fifty-five plus, but are fifty-five plus um, community to potentially have um, more housing options. So we are proposing to increase it from six to ten percent. Um, again, that doesn't mean that there's all these vacant lots now that are going to be able to be developed. Actually, people are going to have to come in for a zone change. Um, so there is still going to be a little bit of a restriction. Um, uh, through the commission, you'll have a little more control over what properties do still get developed as age restricted housing. Um, we just want to give that opportunity when there's a right fit um, for that in town.
So this was another one that came, that's been, that's been around for a while. This one was, we've had a lot of age restricted homes, as you, as you guys know, between uh, across from the fire station on, on uh, one eleven and the one on um, uh, was that Purdy Hill Road? They're popping up more and more. And with the, with the, with everyone getting older and less and less kids coming, now, I mean, they're all coming to Monroe, but nationwide, you know, people are having less kids. This is a nice way to keep, keep people back in town, especially people that have been here for quite a long time. Um, I believe we ran the numbers and every percent that we went up on that allowed us like fifty-ish.
Yeah.
Allowed us like fifty-ish units. So uh, during subcommittee, uh, we came to the agreement of adding four percent. When we added four percent, we were roughly adding two hundred units, give or take, in that ballpark. Um, and we felt as, as the subcommittee, two hundred units A is a lot. Um, but it also gives time to see how, how everything else is, is going amongst town, and this is a number that we could always revisit when we get closer to that two hundred number if, if need be. So this is how it really came about. And Dom, any questions, concerns? Ryan?
No questions.
Is there anybody online or in the audience that would like me to speak on behalf? Nope. Kathleen?
Good.
She's closed. Uh, what do you want to do with this one?
Why can't we, we can still.
Still go over.
Read everything because we'll need to see the draft when we go to vote later.
One little, perfect. So let's go with uh.
In accordance with CGS eight dash seventy, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, February sixth, twenty twenty-five at seven p.m. or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting. Uh, and in-person attendees at Monroe Town Hall, RAA twenty twenty-five zero seven, file one zero four four. Petition application for regulation amendment to amend zoning regulations, section two point two point one definitions, one point nine point six B, street frontage, three point one point four point B, lot area and bulk standards, three point two point four point B, lot area and bulk standards, three point three point four point B, lot area and bulk standards, and add six point one four to define and develop cluster development regulations. Notice was published in the Connecticut Post, once on January twenty-seventh and on February third.
And if anybody didn't bring their copy, this is uh, extra copies of those regulations.
Uh, Kathleen, what do you have for exhibits?
Exhibit one is the application and proposed text change. Exhibit two is the municipal referrals and regional referrals. Exhibit three is the West Cog response, exhibit four is the NV Cog response, exhibit five is the Metro Cog response, all saying no significant um, impact. Exhibit six is from the Conservation and Water Resource Commission, which I would like to read at this time. The Monroe Conservation and Water Resource Commission is submitting the following comments in regard to the proposed zoning regulation amendments on cluster development. The Conservation Commission would prefer that ownership of open space in a cluster development is either the same as in the Monroe subdivision regulations, which states such open space shall be preserved in perpetuity and conveyed to and accepted by the town, or other approved conservation nonprofit organization with the recording of an approved subdivision map, or as stated in B, one of this amendment deeded to the town of Monroe by warranty, deed free and clear of all encumbrances. The commission is concerned that if the open space is owned as stated in B two, retained and held in private ownership by a domestic corporation or limited liability company, it will be harder and possibly more costly to restrict, enforce and use of the open space to passive recreation or conservation uses. The commission suggests a definition of passive recreation to be added to the amendment, such as a passive recreation and conservation area is an undeveloped space where emphasis is placed on preservation of the environment with no adverse impact to the natural habitat. Passive recreation areas do not permit building of any type or use of any vehicles, motorized or non-motorized. Okay. The state permits planning and zoning commissions to apply a cluster development, so they don't define it as cluster subdivision, they combine it as a cluster development. So you'll say, see that change in our text regulations. That a cluster developments um, can be applied for when approximately a third of the open space, a third of the lot is used for open space. It does not define what a cluster development is. It doesn't say it's the reductions of your bulk standards by fifty percent. It just gives the power to the commission to make those changes. We have had some inquiries by applicants um, wanting to do cluster so, cluster subdivisions and applying the state statutes to the properties. Staff has concerns with that because of the uniqueness of the town of Monroe. We are a well and aquarium, public water supply town. So different areas of town can either get water through aquarium, or water through a well. We are a subsurface system, treatment system only, so we are a septic system only town. We do not have access um, to sewage. And we are a state that has stormwater regulations. So when you are trying to see if you can develop a property, you have to fit all of those pieces onto the property. You have to fit the house, the driveway, the septic system, the stormwater system and your water. And then there are setbacks and divisions between all those different utilities because you don't want um, you don't want items being too close to each other, both from constructability and from contamination standpoint. So the thought was if we are getting these inquiries in, do we as a town want to actually develop cluster development regulations that were well thought through and gave the commission guidelines from staff, the town engineer, the director of health and myself of what those limits would be um, and where we think it would be appropriate. And we were um, directed by subcommittee to draft those regulations. We have gone through them in subcommittee, um, and what you have in front of you is our, the final result. Some of the updates on page one again is just about changing um, cluster subdivision to cluster development um, and referencing the new part of our regulations. Once we get to page six, that's where we get into the meat. We'll be adding a new cluster development section. That cluster development um, talks about qualifying standards. So in order to be able to be considered for the classification, classification of a cluster development, the land has to be in an RF two or RF three district. So what we're doing is we are um, omitting RF one. We don't believe that there should be any manipulation to lots in RF one district. Not only are most of them one acres, most of them are actually pre-existing non-conforming lots and they're half acres. Um, so the, the area in that space is, is already kind of a mixture. And our half acre lots, or zoning board of appeals is constantly getting um, applications in because it's really hard to do anything on a half acre lot. Um, so we omitted them from that. The minimum parcel size of land um, shall contain a minimum of fifteen contiguous acres or a number of contiguous parcels under one ownership equaling a minimum of fifteen acres. Um, we don't force applicants to merge their lots um, prior to putting an application in because then if they don't get the approval, they would have to subdivide them again. Um, so that's why it's both contiguous or equal ownership. Frontage, the partial shall not have less than two hundred feet of contiguous frontage on a public highway. The application process for the cluster subdivision um, both requires a subdivision application and a special ex, a special exception permit. Um, both of them can be submitted simultaneously. The idea of the special exception permit is it gives this commission a little more leeway to add specific conditions to the approval if it sees fit. Um, whereas a subdivision regulation is mostly making sure that it is just complying with the bulk standards that you want it to fit within. Permitted uses are just the permitted uses that are permitted as part of the underlying zone. The open space requirement, not less than thirty-four percent of the gross area of the partial shall be designated, add and remain in perpetuity of open space. So again, in order to grant someone a cluster subdivision, the idea is that they are conserving or preserving um, a large portion of the property, of which case we have assigned the number of thirty-four percent. The open space may be developed only for passive recreation and conservation uses. Um, the idea is, is because we are giving them the option that it can remain in private ownership, they are allowed to develop this for passive recreation. They could put trails into the system, you know, for their residents um, that are in this area. Um, and the hope is, is keeping it in private ownership and potentially doing small enhancements for passive recreation. There is a sense of ownership that they'll take care of um, the property. Um, and they'll be able to um, keep it in some sort of conservation or preservation state. The open space shall be located upon the parcel only where the, only where approved by the commission. The open space shall be permanently dedicated or reserved as open space by deed covenant or restriction as required by the commission and shall be recorded in the town of Monroe land records. Again, this gives um, the commission the opportunity to do some sort of restriction. Um, let's say you don't want passive trails, you know, recreational trails on it. Um, this gives you the opportunity to put that um, in some sort of restriction. No fee in lieu of open space shall be applicable for a cluster development. So are typical subdivision regulations, uh, if you can't fit open space on the property, we allow you to do a fee in lieu of, if the commission agrees to it. That is not even an option here because again, the whole purpose of these regulations is to um, provide additional open space. On page eight, means of open space dedication and reservation. The open space shall be permanently dedicated and reserved by open space by deed covenant or restriction as required by the commission and shall be recorded in the town of Monroe land records by one or more of the following means. Deeded to the town of Monroe by warranty, deed free and clear of all encumbrances, retained and held in private ownership, provided such private ownership is vested in a domestic corporation or limited liability company registered with the state of Connecticut, the membership of which consists of all of the owners of the lots within the cluster development, each having an undivided beneficial right to the, in the use of land and subject to the restrictions pertaining and responsibility for the cost of maintenance of the privately owned space. No privately owned space in the cluster development shall be sold or the ownership thereof transferred until after the town of Monroe has given the right to purchase such open space, including any improvements and facilities located thereon. Any open space developed for passive recreation or conservation uses shall be permanently dedicated to such use as appropriate by deed covenant and restriction, so as to prohibit the use thereof for the purposes whatsoever in perpetuity. The other um, big takeaway of, of these regulations is it provides an alternative to the recreational residence district. Um, instead of applying the cluster subdivisions, we have had applicants in the past um, propose a jo, zone change to the recreational residence district. The point of that district is to allow not just conservation areas, open space and passive recreation, but it can also be active recreation. So that land could be a golf course. And then you have three work, three quarter acre lots that go around the golf course that all look out, you know, on this view. It gives the opportunity for developments um, in that area. The reason they can go down to three quarters of an acre is because um, they have to be on a public water supply and they also have to have a sewage treatment plant um, as part of the project, which is why they can develop that area. Um, this is to give an alternative to that. It doesn't require you to be on a public water supply and it does not require a sewage treatment plant, doesn't prohibit it, but it doesn't require it. Um, giving an alternative, again, to preserve the open space um, in areas of town which do not meet the recreational residence requirements. Open space plan, a site improvement plan shall be prepared for all public and private owner space. Um, again, just talking about uh, keeping existing natural characteristics of open space in its original condition. We go to page nine, this is where we talk about density, lot area and bulk standards. Recreational residences have a higher density um, allotment. The idea of this regulation is not to increase the number of lots you can have on the property. So as part of it, they have to prove out the number of lots they would have to, they could develop on a conventional subdivision. So the total number of single family building lots and or dwelling units permitted through the cluster development process shall not exceed the number which could be permitted in the commission's judgment if the land were subdivided into lots conforming to the minimum lot size and density requirements of the underlying zone. So again, this is not supposed to increase the number of lots that can be developed. It's supposed to encourage open space and allow um, lots to be clustered in a way that allows, our current regulations allow fifty percent of a lot to be wetlands. Which means that you are trusting the private owner to one, know that fifty percent of his lot is even a wetland. And then two, not to do anything that violates both the wetlands and the hundred foot upwind review area. Um, so the idea is if you can take all of those acres of wetlands that are on the backside of the property and actually cluster them and then allow the cluster subdivision to be in a different part of the site, not near highly sensitive ecological areas. And it has the opportunity to preserve the open space. So again, they're not getting more lots, but we're hoping that it um, encourages lots to not have a substantial amount of wetlands in the rear. The lot and bulk standards set forth in three point two and three point three may be modified as followed by the commission for applications processed through the cluster development. The following standards shall be considered minimums, which may be increased where determined necessary or appropriate by the commission to comply with the purposes intent of this section. All other dimensional standards as set forth in three point two and three point three shall apply, including applicable conditions. So this is the minimum amount the bulk standards can be reduced to, but you don't have to grant them in a little round, you can grant them somewhere in between. Um, so in the minimum lot areas for these is fifteen acres as we discussed. In an RF two zone, you can reduce the lot area by fifty percent, so you can go from two acres to one acre. Same with an RF three zone, you can go from three acres to one point five acres. The minimum square is one thirty-five by one thirty-five, that doesn't really change from the standards because again, the idea um, is that these are slightly being adjusted, um, not substantially. Minimum frontage is a hundred and fifty feet um, for both zones. Minimum front yard is fifty feet for both zones, minimum side and rear yards are twenty-five feet for both zones. That is currently what their setbacks are now, those are not being changed as part of this. The maximum building coverage of individual lots is eighteen percent. Um, that is being changed. Um, one, the clarification is it is building coverage. RF one zones is site coverage, RF two and RF three is building coverages. And we are increasing those. Um, the idea is that you want to make sure that you can um, still build upon these lots even though that they're lower, but you don't increase the building coverage so much that you take up the space that's going to be needed for stormwater and septic. Um, so eighteen percent was thoroughly discussed uh, with staff, um, with the director of health and with our town engineer to find what we felt was the right size number for that. Um, and then building. Um, and then building height is per the underlying, uh, zone that does not change. In computing the area land necessary to meet the requirements set forth in these regulations, no more than twenty percent of the minimum required lot area may include lands underwater. No more than fifty percent of the minimum required lot area may include wetland soils and or slopes. Thirty-five percent or more shall be considered as part of the lot area requirements. That's very similar to what our current regulations are, except for the fact that we added wetland soils and or slopes thirty-five percent or more. So the slope is not in our normal subdivision. So the idea is that you can't have a really sloping and wetland property and still develop for these areas. Instead of having the full fifty percent, um, just be wetlands, we're having it to be a combination of the two. Because again, the idea of this is that you are developing it on lands that aren't environmentally sensitive. You're taking them off and we do consider slopes to have, um, some environmental benefit, um, to remain intact. The land area necessary to comply with the minimum lot area requirements must be contiguous and not separated by environmentally constrained lands. So you can't have a stream go through your property and really dissect it down the middle and still consider that whole area to be part of your, um, one point five acres. Utilities, no application for classification as a cluster development shall be approved by the commission without the prior written approval of the director of health. As to the feasibility, location, construction, operation and maintenance of the septic systems or septic package treatment plant as may be the case. Uh, which is similar to what we have to do now, uh, we just wanted to make sure that it was in writing. These have been reviewed, all of these have been reviewed by the town attorney, but this has been thoroughly reviewed by the town attorney. Um, and all of his comments and markups have been incorporated in the draft that you, uh, received as part of your application. Any questions?
Uh, this one's a lot, this one's a lot, but it's something that needed to get done. Um, I know Kathleen. Kathleen put, Kathleen and the staff put a lot of time and effort into this, especially, uh. You could see what they did, I mean, they, they added a lot, they took some way. And it wasn't easy, especially getting it through with, with, uh, town attorney and all that kind of stuff, so. Dominic, you have any questions, bud?
No, I have no questions.
Ryan?
No questions.
Leon?
I just have a question about the open space. About becoming privately owned. How do we go about that?
That was prompted by a comment in subcommittee, um, to add that as an option, um, for this. I don't take objection to it, I don't take an exception to that. I think there are going to be situations that are going to be benefit for, again, the community to take ownership of a space. I think you would be surprised if there's some sort of active, not active passive recreation, um, that the community would embrace, um, you know, taking part of that. Open space in town is, we don't have the manpower to maintain every single open space property, you know, that we have and basis species are. You know, a really difficult situation that the whole state is dealing with. Um, and if we do have the opportunity for a community to, you know, take ownership of some of the open space in a way that we think they will actually do it. Um, I think that's a viable option.
We've had issue with people violating open space before.
We have issues with people violating town open space now, on your basis.
If we don't own it, if we don't have any say in it, if it's privately owned.
It's still deed restricted though.
I understand that part. We don't have any. Really, I mean, teeth besides going after them and having them comply with. And then if they do sell it off, they don't want it, then we have to buy it out from them?
We have the option to buy it for them. So let's say the entire association and property gets sold from one developer to another developer. Um, the idea is that they just have the opportunity, the town has the opportunity to purchase it if they want to.
So we have no control over it with the, either?
Well, we always have control over wetlands and our upland review areas and environmentally sensitive areas. You know, and also if there's a deed restriction on it, they do have to comply with the deed restriction.
I understand it, but we don't have any control over the decision of privately owned or deeded to the town?
If we provide both of those options, they can, they can offer both of those options. Right now, for like a subdivision, they can't offer a privately owned option, it's just not covered in the regulations.
We just get it, right? But we, do we make that decision or it could be one or the other?
In this approval, he means would we be the ones deciding that they privately own or that it goes to us or?
If you don't approve it, like you could deny an application because. So a cluster subdivision is at the discretion of the commission. You know, it's not, again, it's at the, and same thing with, they need a special exception permit. Again, which gives this commission more discretion on what you can and cannot approve as compared to it just being. A, a classic subdivision or let's say a site development plan where they just have to meet the bulk standards. So you can't tell them, you have to make this. Deeded to the town of Monroe, but you can deny an application because you don't think it's appropriate for the space because they're proposing. Private ownership.
I think the question is who decides?
They decide, I mean, they're going to put forward what they would like to do.
They'll decide if it's going to be privately owned or they'll decide if they're going to give it to the town?
Yes, because they're proposing the application, but you can deny it.
No, I understand that, but then still they can dispute it or take it to court.
You can take anything to court.
What I'm saying, but if the other way, if we just say it's got to be deeded to the town.
I don't have really strong opinions one way or the other. The reason it was added into this was because it was, uh, requested at subcommittee that it get added to these regulations.
My, my opinion, I kinda, I kinda like the option, I know the town, the town has a ton of open space currently. Um, we don't have the power to maintain what we have currently. So somebody coming in and saying, hey, we will, we will, uh, keep it in house or whatever to have them maintain, it's not a bad idea. In my opinion, again, I'm just one, so, um, I think a lesser burden on the town on open space at this moment is, is really not a bad idea.
That would be owned by them, but still.
But we still have a say.
Would be able to access it, it would still be open space.
I don't believe so, right?
No.
No.
If it's in private.
You're taking it away.
Private ownership, so it would just be.
We don't allow the public to access the, um, certain town open spaces now, I mean, they can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we.
All the open space has to have.
What? We don't allow them to manipulate it.
Manipulate, yes, but access, that's what I'm saying. Sorry, if this was privately owned, would it, could I go hiking?
No.
No.
If the town owned it, I guess.
You can go hiking in it, but people often go hiking in our town open spaces that have all of our wetlands in it, which is not permitted. Which is really roaming thought was going to.
Dominic?
If it's privately owned, can we give them some kind of guidance? That says that they have to at least maintain it somehow?
Yeah, there can be restrictions and, um, deed restrictions and covenants which could outline. How you want that to be maintained.
Ryan, do it, that's a gift. Is there anybody in the public, either online or here, that would like to comment on this? Just name and address, Rick.
Appreciate the word. Um, so I, I really do think that allowing it to be privately owned couldn't be a problem. I mean, I know very well that the town has enough, uh, manpower to maintain open space. And then here a few towns, towns do, well, maintain walls of space, we don't go out there. We did, we should be trying to do maybe a little bit more than we should. But I would really be concerned that privately owned, you know, you have five acres and maybe ten homeowners. Who own this property, who, it's in the deed, but they decide, oh, we're going to put down some trees and put in a dirt bike track. I mean, who gets to, I, I don't know, but who gets to enforce, who gets to say, you can't do that and then stop them? And then going to courts in here, I mean, I don't even know if you could do that. But that would be, I guess. That's pretty answering that question, that if that's possible to say to them, in a private group that privately owns land, that. That's not passive recreation and, uh, you can't do that. Who gets to say that?
Thank you. Mr. Russo?
Chair Commissioners, Chris Russo with Russo Rizzi LLC. Um, I think this is a, a great amendment, um, thank Kathleen for all her hard work, uh, on it. Um, I think, you know, some of the important points, uh, about it are that. You know, you're not allowed to create more lots than you would, uh, be if you just went for a regular subdivision. Um, and you're lowering to a lot area in the case of the RF two going down to one acre. You're lowering it to a lot area that's a lot area that you, that is permitted, uh, you know, obviously in the RF one district. So it's not like it's permitting a lot area of like a quarter of an acre or something that you don't see. Um, you know, at least permitted in the regulations. Um, the other thing too is, even though these are smaller lots, the. The street setback of fifty feet is the same street setback of the RF two and RF three zones. So that's not coming down and the side and rear setback is only slightly, um. Coming down from the RF two and RF three standards, the RF two and RF three is thirty feet. Um, this would allow for twenty-five feet, just, you know, to make some room for the, uh, extra room for these, the houses. But I think, you know, it, even though it's dropping in size, there's still some good buffering here. Um, and, uh, the building height's the same as you would find in those zones. So you're not going to find a house that's of a, you know, a different height than you would otherwise. Um, and then you just have this, you know, obviously huge benefit of all this conserved land. Um, so I, 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 I think it's a, a real well-done regulation and, uh, support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you, uh?
Oh, that's James, that's our town engineer who was on.
Sure. Yeah, everybody, uh, James, I'm the town engineer. Um, I just wanted to point out, I think, you know, I'm hearing, um. Some talks about, you know, private, public, um, in terms of the open space. Really, in my view, the biggest benefit of having the privately owned open space is it grants. The ability to have passive recreation as part of the development. You know what I mean? If, if for the development, they want to do hiking trails, things like that, that's something that they can now do. If it gets deeded to the town, then that kind of almost falls off the table. So that's just the real benefit to it and that's something for you guys to just keep in the back of your mind is all.
Thank you. Do you, uh? Please, there's nobody else. Do you, um, want to close it? Do you want to go make copies? We are going to take a five-minute break. Eight oh six. Eight eleven, we're back. Just in time deliberations, determinations, so. We can deliberate on all the text amendments today. Um, we have directed staff to have approvals drawn up. So RAA twenty twenty-five dash oh one file number one zero eight three.
I'll make a motion to approve RAA twenty twenty-five oh one file one zero three eight as drafted.
Condon has a motion, we need a second?
Second.
Dominic, I need you a second? Any discussion?
First one.
We're gonna start, we're gonna start top.
Starting from the top.
Any discussion? Call the roll?
I need you, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosia, yes.
Mayini, yes.
Westland, yes.
And it passes. Five oh.
I'll make a motion to approve RAA twenty twenty-five zero two file one zero three nine as drafted.
Condon with the motion, need a second?
Ambrosia, second.
Leon with a second? Any discussion? No discussion, call the roll?
H A S.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosia, yes.
Mayini, yes.
Westland, yes.
Passes five, nothing.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve RAA twenty twenty-five zero three file one zero four zero as drafted.
We have, uh, Condon with the motion, we need a second?
Second, Ambrosia.
Leon with the second? Any discussion on this one? Call the roll?
H A S.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosia, yes.
Mayini, yes.
Westland, yes.
That's another five oh. Next?
I'll make a motion to approve RAA twenty twenty-five zero four file one zero four one as drafted.
Condon with the motion, we need a second?
Second, Panitia.
Panitia with a second? Any discussion? Call the roll?
H A S.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosia, yes.
Mayini, yes.
Westland, yes.
Beautiful. Uh, where are we at? Four, forty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve RAA twenty twenty-five zero five file one zero four two as drafted.
Condon with the motion, we need a second?
Second, Ambrosia.
Ambrosia, a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, uh, right, this is, this is the.
Abouters.
This is, yeah, this is the notification, I just want to bring up, I mean, are we, we're all good with, uh. The switch, right, because there was obviously concern with the public on whether or not it's going to be the certified versus.
Yeah, we're good.
I did, yeah, I mean, we, we did the research in western towns around us, like Trump and everything, they're going this, I don't have an issue with it.
And it seems like with this, with this, with the certified mail, if they don't have somebody to sign for it, they don't deliver it, right? So basically if you're at work and can't sign, you don't get the notification.
Correct.
Again, you just.
They try, yeah.
Try again.
Yeah, so it's.
They're not trying that.
You're more likely to actually receive it if it's in your mailbox and you come home from work.
That's our thought.
Dominic?
Just for clarification, we're going with certified mail.
No, no. Away from certified mail.
Certificate of mailing.
Certificate.
Sounds the same.
Thank you.
Basically it proves that it was mailed, it doesn't prove it was received.
Then we get a copy that commission.
Yeah, it gets, it's an exhibit, yeah, that they have to submit. And to be honest, we don't always get all of the green cards back in time. So all they're really doing is proving to us that they mailed it, they're not even.
At the end of the day, there's no perfect, they start a little easier.
Exactly. All right, call the roll?
H A S.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosia, yes.
Mayini, yes.
Westland, yes.
That passes five oh, I need, uh, four three?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve RAA twenty twenty-five zero six file one zero four three as drafted.
We have Condon with a motion?
Westland.
My man has joined the party, okay, Westland with a second? Um, any discussion?
This was the.
This is a desperate need at the town, so I, I am very much for this one.
Yeah, no, there's a, there's a definite need for this, so. And there's really no, uh, there's really no downfall to it. Any other discussion? Dominic, call the roll?
Yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosia, yes.
Mayini, yes.
Westland, yes.
And last but not least.
I will make a motion to approve RAA twenty twenty-five zero seven file one zero four four as drafted.
We have Condon with a motion, we need a second?
Second, Panitia, second.
Panitia with a second?
Yeah, something I think we need to discuss with this one.
More than, more than welcome.
Whether or not.
Now is the time.
Going to, uh, allow public open space or private open space, or I shouldn't say public, but. Are we going to allow private open space?
I'm okay with it. It's a good one, I think. I'm okay with it, I'm good.
I'm okay with private.
Okay with private?
We do, I mean, I understand the fear of the pri- of. Having it private, but I also like the fact that we could defy one of these applications flat out. If we feel like, you know, because within the application, they're going to tell us what the plan is for that private, um, open space. And if they say, oh yeah, we're gonna.
It doesn't mean that they have to develop the open space.
No, that doesn't mean they have to develop anything when we approve it, I mean. It's always, at the end of the day, all these decisions always come down to us trusting the people in front of us and giving them the benefit of that doubt. Um, but I do get the idea, like, you know, the way our town engineer kind of talked about it. If you think about a subdivision being built and they turn over the public space and then it just becomes. It's woods, which is great, it's great for the environment and everything, but you don't get. The kind of inner community build, like if something like a Northbrook was built or more clustered and all of a sudden had. or more clustered and all of a sudden had this kind of ability to pat the range away in that nature. One, it's something that's more appealing for that community.
If they make it a trail, we're going to make it a private trail, so it's not going to be a public.
No.
But it's also a cluster subdivision, so there's going to be many homes.
The other thing is that what if just other open space properties that could connect to that open space that we already own? We don't have any.
They don't go on to our, they don't go into our open.
No, but we could develop, yeah, that open space was put in there for like recreation for people to go on to.
Eventually putting in trail.
Trails and stuff like that. That's what it's made for. And that's the reason why that we require developers to give us open space. I mean, if we ever required it, and we always did it all as private, then they can do a cluster subdivision, says, well, we're going to make this private, but we're going to tell the community that we're going to make that private, but we're going to develop this just for our community. And then the townspeople get no use out of it at all.
Yeah, I think it's also to safeguard overdevelopment.
That's the main point. It's not necessarily about giving something over to the community and more protecting the environment, keeping, keeping it green.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's not something that I would, you know, I, I would be okay striking the private. Um.
I like.
I'm not going to vote the thing down if we have it in. I'm not going to vote it down if we don't. It's.
I'm in the same boat.
It's one of those things that if.
Yeah, I just, I.
Passionate about.
I just have an issue with the private part, so.
All right, is there anybody else that wants to discuss?
Yeah.
I just have a question regarding if they want to develop into a park with a walkway and some benches, do they have to come in front of the town?
They would have to have that as part of their special exception permit and I don't, I wouldn't consider a park to be passive recreation. I would consider a park to be active recreation because you would have like playgrounds and things like that. I think you could maybe skirt the idea of having like a wood mulch trail with a bench at the trailhead. And that would still be considered to be passive, but I would not consider it like a park, even if it's like a park implies either a play structure or like an open lawn area to, you know, and that's defeating the purposes um of it. That is something that, you know, it was suggested by, you know, Ms. Thomas to maybe put in definition of passive recreation. I can see if we have that. I'm pretty sure we don't have it in the zoning regs, but I can see if the subdivision regs um have that in there to maybe define, you know, your concerns a little more.
Yeah.
Any else? Call the roll.
Panitia, yes.
So wait, I'm so sorry. We're voting on it as drafted. That was the motion.
Correct.
Panitia, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, no.
Myeni, yes.
Westland, yes.
Passes four one. That's all of them. Um, pending meeting minutes for.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting since from January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. I can't, I was absent. Can't remember.
Uh, was, who was here? Who was here for it? So is it only just?
Not everybody else. Oh, no, me and Rob were both off.
Right.
Correct.
Well, we still have three, so I'm not going to seat Nicole for meeting.
Well, you three can vote.
So I'm saying.
We just abstained. Dominic's making the motion.
I second them. Oh, can I second the message here?
Yeah.
Second.
Of course.
Bill Batar's got crazy rules. I don't know what's going on. What? Dominic, call the roll.
No, Panitia, yes.
Condon abstain.
Ambrosi, yes.
Myeni, yes.
Westland abstain.
Passes three oh. Um.
Don't think it's important matters.
Eight twenty-four referrals, you ready?
Yep.
Um, James DeMayo, our town engineer, has joined us tonight to go through two eight twenty-four referrals.
I need, I need to take two seconds. You guys can.
So what an eight twenty-four referral is, is any time that the town is uh manipulating a road, widening it, accepting it, narrowing it, or accepting a piece of property similar to what happened at St. Jude's. Um, a eight twenty-four referral is required to go into the zoning commission. You are writing a positive or a negative referral to town council. If for some reason this commission would write a negative referral, it would require any vote by town council to pass by two-thirds of a vote instead of just by a simple majority. Um, so you've got packets for both of this. James is going to start with the Todd Drive culvert replacement.
Yep, so good evening, everybody again. James DeMayo, your town engineer. Um, so Todd Drive Culver, uh, what we currently have is Todd Drive is a um short road with a cul-de-sac. Um, we have a culvert crossing about two-thirds of the way down the road, and then there's four properties past this culvert. Uh, this culvert is actively failing. Um, so we are proposing to replace it with a box culvert. Um, a- and the road is kind of in disrepair, so we, we kind of, we've been holding off on repaving the road until we can fix the, the culvert issue first. Um, this, this application has already gone through inland wetlands. Um, right now, I, it's on the capital list for this next year, I believe. So hopefully, we're getting, going to be able to get the project done um this coming year. And um hopefully, this way, the, the last four residents are only inconvenienced for a little bit of time while we replace it, and then they get a nice new road, so. That's Todd Drive. Do, do we want to do both or just the one, Kathleen?
Uh, we should just do the one because this isn't separated technically. We should vote on it before we go to the next one. Um, staff believes that the replacement of the existing failing pipe culverts along Todd Drive will improve road stability, reduce flood risks, and ensure continued safe passage for vehicles. Do we want to? Yeah, right.
Um, so James, just the process, how long, I mean, does the road completely shut down when that? Or will they, will the four residents be able to leave their houses? Yes, so be- because of the fact we have to make sure that we those residents have access to their homes and emergency services always have access to those homes. We're basically going to have to do, i- it's going to prolong the construction process, but we're going to basically close off one side, allow vehicles to travel on the other, finish that, then flip over. A- and the whole time, you know, we're able to deal with the water because we have to put in a big bypass pipe to go through um and around, so. Um, and then once the culvert's in, then we can pull the bypass pipe back out and and get them all cleaned up. But yeah, no, i- it, the construction process is probably going to take a little bit longer than most people would think because we have to keep, keep it open for emergency services and the property owners.
I was in attendance at the inland wetland meeting when this was going through and the neighbors were there and they were very complimentary um to our town engineer DeMayo because he was just in communication with them, had walked them all through it, and they were very kind of aware. And they were very much in favor of, of the project occurring.
Yeah, well, I'm sure the alternative of the road failing it, it's. They will be able to get to their houses. Yeah. Well, it, it, so this even predates me, starting with the town. Um, they've been, you know, DPW has been, you know, filling in holes over there constantly, constantly, because what's happening is the, the, all the roadway and the, and the the shoulder just keeps getting sucked down through the culvert and washing out. So all we can do is fill the hole back in before it eats away at the rest of the road, so. Th- this is a much-needed fix. Um, and, and as Kathleen has mentioned, I, I've been in talks with the property owners. The only other thing that I have left on the to-do list with them is to just finalize easement agreements for the construction. Um, but they've all verbally given me the green light, saying they're, they're in favor of this because they also want a new road. So.
One question, I'm sure you thought of it, but during construction, fire equipment could go through?
Yes, yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right.
Uh, let's move on to the next one. All right, James, do you want to start? Uh, do you want to present Judd Road?
Yep, so uh Judd Road Bridge, this we have a bridge that's currently located on Judd Road, which, which is shared by, or the, the town line with Easton is literally goes right through the center of the bridge. Um, this bridge ha- is in pretty bad shape. Um, so of, of, think of in twenty sixteen, uh, the town of Monroe entered an agreement with Easton to start the process and getting a design and everything else. Um, so this is a joint project between Monroe and Easton. Uh, just like Todd Drive, we already have inland wetland approval. Um, this is a lot zip funded project. Um, the project is currently about to go back to the hands of uh Metro Cog and DOT for their um final review, which will also um give us the authorization to bid, so that's hopefully going to be done this year as well. Um, thi- this one's a little bit different. This one we have to detour around, uh, because this one is a, a actual bridge span. Um, but luckily for us, the, there's two abutments that are currently where the bridge span is. And then looking at all the hydraulic analysis, we actually have to make that opening bigger to deal with all the current uh flooding events and everything else. So we're actually able to leave those headwalls in, construct new ones behind it, and then um pull out the, the old abutments and then uh span across that, so. Um, I know that was a big thing for wetlands because we're not disturbing so much, but uh but yeah, so this construction is a little bit more straightforward for us, actually.
Any questions?
No, we're good?
All right.
So we do have to vote. Um, so uh for the Todd Drive culvert uh replacement, the motion would just be to issue a positive referral in regards to the replacement of the existing failing pipe culverts along Todd Drive, which will improve roadway stability, reduce flood risks, and ensure continued safe passage for vehicles.
Do you need a motion and a?
Motion is accepted.
I'll make a motion to send a positive referral to town council with regards to uh the Todd uh drive improvements.
Second.
Panitia, second.
Panitia with the second? Vote it? Vote.
Vote. Panitia, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Myeni abstain?
Westland, yes.
Passes four oh. Uh, we have a bunch of bond referral, uh, bond.
Have to do Judd Road.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping the boat.
I'll make a motion to send a positive referral to town council for the improvements to Judd Road.
Judd Road?
Judd Road. Second.
Uh, Condon with the motion and Westland with the second? Discussion? Nothing?
Dominic, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Myeni abstain?
Westland, yes.
Now can we go on to the bond releases?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll have a good night.
Thank you.
You, keep up the good work.
Proud of you. Um. Uh, Kathleen, do you want to, I know there's like four bond, three or four bond releases, three bond releases. Do you want to run through them for me, please?
First one is a request for bond release for S E P twenty eighteen oh three. This is two oh five Monroe Turnpike. Um, the original bond was for eighty thousand dollars. That included Panera, Aldi, and what was the office medical facility in the back that then got amended to the self-storage facility. The owner of the property filed a condo declaration on town records and therefore sold the self-storage facility to another owner. He basically bought the condo of the self-storage facility. So the new owners of that area have now posted a new bond and the original uh owner is requesting for a release of his bond.
Correct.
It was reduced from eighty thousand to forty thousand dollars um through the construction process. Um, so he is asking for a release of a forty thousand dollar cash bond.
And the uh staff is in favor?
We are recommending the release of the bond.
Any discussion?
I don't know if it's appropriate to ask at this moment, but are we, is the self-storage moving forward or is something else coming?
No, it's close. Um, it's close. It's moving forward. Um, they have to, um, I think they have a couple more things for the building permit, but they have done the substantial amount of work for the project for their approval, so we do expect it to um get approval soon.
I'm in favor of releasing the bond.
Well, I'll start with Dominic.
Uh, Panitia, yes.
Oh, we're voting.
Are we taking a uh?
I need a vote, but I need a motion.
Second. Sorry, sorry, take a motion?
Uh, motion to release uh the bond for S E P twenty eighteen zero three two oh five Monroe Turnpike.
Second.
We have Condon with the motion and Panitia with the second? Go roll. Dominic?
Panitia, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Myeni, yes.
Westland, yes.
All right, that one's good. Give them back their cash.
The second is for S E P twenty twenty oh five six fifteen Main Street. This is Bestin Backyards. Uh, they came in front of this commission almost a half a year ago, asking for a release of the bond. However, we had an active complaint on the lighting that was under the overhang. Um, after review of the special exception permit, they did not meet um their proposed lighting amendments. So they had to go back and replace the lighting under the overhang. They have done so. I conducted a site visit at night, uh, February eleventh. Um, and uh it looks significantly better than what um it did before. So we are very appreciative of them following through with that. So staff is recommending a bond release uh for the fifteen thousand dollar cash bond.
Make a motion to release the bond for S E P twenty twenty zero five six fifteen Main Street.
Ambrosi, second.
Condon with the motion, Ambrosi with the second. Any discussion on it? Vote.
Panitia, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Myeni, yes.
Westland, yes.
Two down.
The third is for one forty-three Pretty Hill Road, formerly known as three seventy-five Spring Hill Road. Um, the Chipotle, they had a bond of eighteen thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars. They had to finish staining the fence. That was not a standing item they'd had for a while, so they were able um to do that at the beginning of February with a couple of the forty-degree days. Um, and they had a couple outstanding items for town engineer DeMayo, of which they have satisfied. Um, so staff is recommending a release of the bond.
Take a motion?
Good question. Yeah, well, we'll do discussion after it. I'll uh make a motion to release the bond for S E P twenty twenty-two oh six one four three Pretty Hill Road, formerly three seventy-five Spring Hill Road.
Need a second?
Second from Ambrosi.
Condon with the motion, Ambrosi with the second. Discussion? Dominic, you have anything?
I have a discussion.
Right?
Yeah, what's the pit that they have?
That was James, and I can't speak to the details of it. Um, James did work with them. I believe they had to do some additional test holes and some amendments um to that, but they have met all of James' um requirements and satisfaction that it will work properly. Um, I, you obviously know he was dealt with a little bit of a difficult situation, but I believe that they came to a conclusion on making sure that functioned properly.
The pit's going to stay?
Yes. It's going to stay. The alternative would be to make them fill it in and then do an underground infiltration system and wear on a already developed site. You know, it was approved by staff.
Previous staff.
Previous staff. And it's not a pit. It's a stormwater management basin, which is a lot standard practice. In the state.
All right, you good? Good. Call the roll?
Panitia, yes.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Myeni, yes.
Westland, yes.
Those are bond releases. Uh, commissioners reports. The chairman's away, so we don't have any. Any other commissioners? Nope. Kathleen, do you have a report?
Um, I do. At the end of your packet is short around the holidays. Um, we don't have as many permits. We have a bunch of stuff in the works. We just haven't issued any. Well, not any, but we just haven't issued substantial amount. Um, building permits and Z C Cs, the big ones, uh, three forty-nine Spring Hill Road, um, which is the four-lot subdivision um that this commission previously approved. Two of those lots have building permits um or zoning compliance certificates, um, and I believe the other two are on their way. Uh, we haven't any, had any certificate of occupancy or minor site plan approvals, but again, we do have a couple of things in review and in the works. Change of tenants this past month was Red Zone Jujitsu and um Skylights for you. Um, so those are two businesses that have come into town. Um, OpenGov, we are live, so all of our administrative permits are now being done via OpenGov. Um, we are very pleased as a staff um on how it is operating. We are just more efficient and can get back to applicants. We are just more efficient and can get back to applicants, and we're just not walking around the building trying to get signatures. Um, it's all being done digitally online, and we think it's much more efficient, and from a record-keeping perspective, um, it's going to be fantastic. Um, we also are going to reduce our need for paper, um, which we are very excited about because we are out of room in the basement for all of our historic files. Um, and moving forward, we think it's going to just help us be a lot more organized and transparent to the community.
Beautiful. We're good to go. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, we're not, we're not.
Want to schedule subcommittee?
Hmm.
Want to wait for Mike?
Do we want to wait for?
We'll, we'll do it next subcommittee, we'll wait for Mike. We'll do next meeting, we'll wait for Mike.
Okay, think about, I'd like to do it in March. Um, I will be doing double duty probably in April, so I will not want to have one in April. Um, but we can do March and May.
We'll just wait for the next meeting to do it.
Great.
Will we adjourn?
Six, right?
Yes.
Next meeting is March sixth, correct?
Yes.
All right, I need a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I need a second? Eight thirty-nine.
Meeting.